We will now call a common council meeting of September 7th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Max, can you start us off, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That'll get us to the approval of the minutes of August 17th, 2021. If everybody'd please take a look. And when you are satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, questions, or comments. Motion, please. The council can make a motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2021. Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Steve.
Kirkowski.
Aye. And our first item is a mayoral consideration, a mayoral proclamation congratulating St. Matthew's Parish in their 180th year. Catherine, when you are ready, please read that into the record.
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, congratulations to St. Matthew Parish on their 180th anniversary. Whereas in 1839, four years before the archdiocese of Milwaukee even existed, nine Irish immigrant families began holding devotions in the homes of John Flynn and Thomas Caveney in Oak Creek. And whereas in 1841, the real founding of the parish occurred as a result of a little log church being constructed on six acres of land donated by John Flynn and James O'Hara. And whereas, even though the community was quite rural at the time, the church was dedicated to St. Matthew, the patron of bankers and tax collectors. And whereas Father Patrick O'Kelly, a missionary pastor and the first pastor of St. Matthew's Parish, often would often travel by horseback to hold mass at the homes of settlers in surrounding communities, including Racine, Burlington, Pleasant Prairie, and Greenfield. And whereas St. Matthew Parish remained a mission church for years, and in the 10 years after the construction of the log church alone, the congregation was served by nine different priests. And whereas Father Martin Kundig, who served as a mission priest for two years and who aided in finishing the log church, was known to have been called the greatest missionary priest in Wisconsin. And whereas in 1852, a log rectory was built and Father Bradley was named the first resident pastor. And whereas after the log rectory burnt in 1859, the members of the congregation were determined to build a church of brick, choosing to build it on the same site. And whereas, in order to hold services during construction, the new church was built around the log church. When the new church was completed, the log church inside was dismantled and carried out through the front doors. And whereas, the new brick church was dedicated in 1861 and had served the parish for a century before being completely remodeled beginning in 1981, and rededicated on the Feast of St. Matthew in 1991. And whereas in 1913, Father Pashang joined, and it was under his leadership that the rectory was replaced. In 1922, the parish hall was built, and in 1928, the rectory burned and was replaced with the current brick building. And whereas, throughout the years, the parish continued to grow, and after an extensive fundraising campaign, a new church and the parish's first school was erected in 1962. And whereas, during this time, the old church, now referred to as the Little Brick Church, was neglected and fell into disrepair, prompting a committee to be formed with the goal of completing and restoring the church in time for the 140th celebration of the parish in 1981. And whereas, during restoration, the Little Brick Church was completely gutted, pews were refurbished, woodwork was rebuilt and reconstructed, and a new oak floor was hand-laid by the parishioners. And whereas, after 12 years of hard work, in 1992, the restoration of the Little Brick Church was finished. And whereas, through the parish's continued growth, an octagonal gathering space and meeting rooms were added in 2005, giving the church a new inviting entrance, adding light and a space to grow spiritually. And whereas, from its early beginnings in 1839 with nine families, to now a community of over 1,000 families, as well as serving over 200 children in grades K-4 through 8, St. Matthew Parish has continued to be an integral part of the Oak Creek community. And whereas, in 2021, St. Matthew Parish will celebrate their 180th anniversary with a celebratory weekend. And whereas, the city of Oak Creek has benefited tremendously from the valuable contribution of St. Matthew's Parish with the growth and stability of the entire community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel Bekavich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, hereby congratulate St. Matthew Parish on their 180th anniversary.
Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anybody like to say anything on St. Matthew's behalf?
Yeah, Mayor Dan, thank you so much, Rich Dukenyak, 3rd District. I am a member of St. Matthew's Parish and was approached by parish members to see what the city could do to acknowledge your honor, that 180th anniversary. And I, the first thought that came to my mind, not even thought, just a comment, 180, I think you have a typo there, that can't be correct. I don't even know what was around in this area. And now finding some of the history, I know what was in this area 180 years ago. So thank you, Mayor Dan. I know that Catherine had some involvement, and Assistant City Clerk Krista Miller was involved in creating the proclamation and the acknowledgement that celebratory weekend will take place at St. Matthew's on the weekend of September 18th. Congratulations for 180 years of faith in the community. And Mayor Dan, thank you for the proclamation and acknowledgement.
Anybody else? It's actually a very amazing accomplishment, you're correct, Rich. If I'm correct, actually, St. Matthew's is older than the state of Wisconsin, and we're actually a territory when they started here. So it's really quite amazing, and if you've ever been in the 4th District, they're in the southeast side of town. It's an iconic structure, it's a beautiful church, and the work they do touches the community forever. I mean, 180 years, they've been helping the community here, it's quite amazing. And again, you really learn something throughout these proclamations. So Barb, I hope you're paying attention, because St. Matthew is the patron saint of tax collectors and bankers. So that's who you pray to in a couple of months here. But to learn more about St. Matthew's and all the good work they do, of course, you can go to St. Matthew's and visit it, but you can also go to the Oak Creek Historical Society, who has full records of this, going back almost that far at times, some of the things they have there. So congratulations to St. Matthew's on their 180th. Okay, we will move on to the next council proclamation, and its consideration of a proclamation to Alexa Alfredo for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Catherine, if you would.
Certainly. Council proclamation number 2114 to Alexa Alfaro for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Whereas, on August 18th, 2020, Alexa Alfaro was appointed to the Police and Fire Commission by Mayor Daniel Bekavich. And whereas, Alexa Alfaro served in that capacity for one year. And whereas, Alexa Alfaro has been instrumental in the appointment of police officers, firefighters. And whereas, Alexa Alfaro served as a liaison between the citizens of Oak Creek and the Police and Fire Departments, ensuring that these departments run smoothly, effectively, and with the utmost integrity. And whereas, as a member of the Police and Fire Commission, Alexa Alfaro has dutifully served the city of Oak Creek in a thorough conscientious and professional manner. And whereas, in September 2021, after one year of service, Alexa Alfaro stepped down from her position on the Police and Fire Commission. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Alexa Alfaro for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Alexa Alfaro, introduced and adopted the 7th day of September, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. Any words for Alexa? Okay. Alexa is a brilliant young woman. Put in her application, was a great addition to Police and Fire Commission. Unfortunately, when you're a brilliant young woman with a thriving career, sometimes you have to make some choices. And she's thriving so well in her business these days that she decided to put the Fire and Police Commission on hold for the time being, but we do appreciate her being here for the last year. She was just a great addition to the Police and Fire Commission, will be missed, and but her work will be remembered, because she did great work for us in the short time she was here. But my thank yous go out on behalf of the council and myself to Alexa. So if we could, motion, please.
Mayor, I will move to approve council proclamation number 21-14 to Alexa Alfaro for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission.
Please, Doug, go second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. And that will get us to our first public hearing, and that is consideration of a request to rezone some properties from RM1 multifamily residential and establish a planned unit development on the properties at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. Catherine, if you'd please read that into record.
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by David Decker, Decker Properties, to rezone to RM1 multifamily residential and establish a planned unit development on the properties at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. Applicant is David Decker, Decker Properties. Property owner is DM Investment Real Estate LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is August 4th, 2021.
And Doug, if you would, please, when you're ready.
I do. There we go. Thank you, good evening. Good, thanks and good evening. I am Doug Seymour, I'm the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek, and the first of the two public hearings this evening is on a request by Decker Properties to rezone the properties at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way from A1 Agricultural and B4 Highway Business to RM1 multifamily residential with a planned unit development. Before you is a concept plan which shows a total of 218 residences in 10 buildings, along with a clubhouse and in-ground pool. If you can see the kind of the, there's a variety of different building sizes there. The red or pink buildings that you see there would be 44 units. The kind of the bluish building in the northwest corner would be 10 townhouses. The yellow buildings would be, I believe, those are eight-unit stacked flats with six units and then four units. So there's a variety of different building types here, but the main focus really is the 44-unit buildings with three stories, underground parking. And this PUD would extend Orchard Way in accordance with the city's official map, which was recently amended, and as well as the state's access management plan for South 27th Street. Parking, again, as we discussed, is provided in accordance with a code, majority of that being underground or in garages and some of the other different unit types. There would be some on-street parking on the private street, and Orchard Way, which would be dedicated to the public, would have some limited on-street parking on one side, although that would not be exclusive to the residents of that development. Perly submitted plan, the PUD would be constructed in three phases over an estimated four years or 48 months. And I just want to show you a little bit, as part of the PUD, as is often the case, there are some deviations that are typically requested from the regulations, the statutes, the ordinances of the city. And in this case, there are some which deal with the building height, again, three stories, and the fact that they're dealing with a significant grade change to the underground parking. They're looking for a maximum height which ranges from 50 to 56 feet, which is a little bit more than the 50 feet allowed. Also, during the various iterations of the site plan, given the presence of wetlands and the economics of the development, there were some setbacks that were proposed to be reduced along Orchard Way, and of course, the setbacks along the private street would not be coming to play as well. Finally, the probably, the more, I don't say obvious, but the more, one that might be noticed most is the plan to use cement board siding as an approved masonry material. The planning commission and the council have allowed this, the use of this product in the past as a primary building material, although again, it's not record-ecr masonry as called out by our code, but it has been used successfully in the past. Just taking a look, I'll run through some of the elevations. This is the clubhouse, so with the meeting room and the swimming pool. That's some concept runnings of that clubhouse. This would be the 44-unit buildings. Again, you can see how the exposed basement to the parking garage adds quite a bit of height to that building. Are the townhomes, there's 10 townhomes constructed as part of that in the northwest corner of the development. And again, you can see how grade changes really play significantly into the site plan and the parking that is being provided here. These are the townhomes again. And finally, these would be, let's go to the stacked flats. These are the stacked flats, these are the eight, six, and four-unit buildings. Just wanted to give you an idea of the phasing plan of the, all of the public roadway and connector street out to 27th Street would be accomplished as part of Phase 1. And just as a note, the connection between Orchard Way and 27th Street, although not a public street, will have a public easement which would allow for the use of that, however, that portion would be privately maintained and would not be a public street. This is just a very brief, this works, is a fly-through showing kind of the character of a portion of that development. Again, you can see the kind of the scale en masse in those buildings for a portion of that, you'll be able to see it as we kind of move around too, how the parking kind of drops down behind and beneath those buildings. So with that in mind, this is a public hearing. I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone these properties to RM1 planning and development, to sign an appearance form. Once your name is called, please proceed to the microphone, the podium, and address the council with your questions or comments. Mayor will call three times for a public hearing. And just before we do that, I understand that the developer is online with us this evening to be able to participate in the public hearing, if that's the council's pleasure. With that, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, I will make three calls. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anyone wishing to speak? Oh, we do have somebody on the line, Kevin. If you'd like to put that person through, please.
David, you should be able to unmute yourself. David, what do you do, name and address?
Hello, is it, is it to me?
Let's go ahead.
Oh, thank you. This is David Decker with Decker Properties, 250 North Sunny Slope Road in Brookfield, Wisconsin. I'm just appearing, as was alluded to earlier, as the developer, available to answer any questions that anyone might have. I apologize that I cannot attend in person, that would be my preference, but I am under quarantine related to COVID, and everyone's fine here, but just kind of trying to preserve everyone's safety here, thought it might be best to stay home this time.
Appreciate that, David. And stand by if there are any questions. So again, I will repeat, second call. And third and final call. We will now close the public hearing, and we will move on to consideration of an ordinance to rezone those properties at 8100, 8146 South 27th Street, 8100 South Orchard Way. Questions from council? Steve? I have one issue that I think Alderman Lorik will probably speak about, if not, then I don't want to take away thunder, but the Doug or Mr. Decker, are we classifying these as luxury apartments or something less than what we've been building here in Oak Creek? And if so, or if not, what the, what's the rent generally going to be for the townhouses and the apartments and such? I may have missed it in the minutes and such, I apologize if it was.
I guess, just trying, I'll let Mr. Decker address that. I mean, terms thrown around like luxury apartments and market-rate apartments, being that, I guess, from the city's perspective, it's, does the proposal meet the codes? And certainly, while it may be of interest to talk about the amenities that are offered and the rent levels that are offered, it's really a matter of, again, does the development meet the city's expectations with respect to the layout and the amenities? But I'm sure that Mr. Decker does have some information about the rent structure here.
Yes, and it's an excellent point. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on that. These are going to be very high-end apartments. Many reasons for that, I mean, given the cost of construction these days, you know, you really can do nothing else like that, but you know, those are terms that, you know, may not mean anything to anyone. So getting into some specifics, you're going to be looking at, you know, an entry-level pricing, $1,500, $1,600 on a one-bedroom, around $2,000 for a two-bedroom. No utilities are included in that. So that kind of gives you just a ballpark of where these apartments are going to come in.
I'm trying to sound rusted and enthused, but that seems to be the general rate for apartments in Oak Creek when we call them luxury apartments. I mean, we seem to be building a lot of luxury apartments in the city. You know, $2,000 a month is more than I pay for my mortgage, so I'm just making that point that, you know, don't totally object to apartments, because that's what folks are generally going for these days, but the monthly rent is, at some point, you run out of people who can afford $2,000 a month, and you need something a little less expensive. He says with some of the feedback I get from folks in the city. So, and then I'll wait to see if Greg has something, if not, then I have one more item.
Alderman Lorik, 2nd District, just one point, I guess, of clarification on that question. I do believe during one of the meetings, I posed a question about apartment buildings and the concern for more school-age children in the schools is often a thing that are brought, is brought up by residents. And I believe that you or somebody with your development company brought up the fact that these units will be marketed towards baby boomers, and please correct me if I am mistaken, but I believe that comment was brought up, is that correct?
Well, again, you know, the 44-unit buildings are a good place to focus. Those units have a lot of one-bedrooms in them, but also they have elevators and underground parking. That is really geared towards people that have ambulatory issues, don't want to deal with stairs. I believe in an earlier meeting, and I just don't recall the statistics offhand, there are only about 20 or 22 units in the entire development that you have to have a deal with stairs. Certainly, the 10 townhouses, you do, all the upper units in the stacked flat apartment buildings also have stairs, but we're really targeting the baby boomer renter by choice. And so you're going to find that the impact on the school system here is going to be negligible, because your primary tenant demographic is the baby boomer renter by choice, but you're also going to see some younger folks forming families, people returning from school, colleges, returning to the community, getting married, setting up household for the first time, perhaps having very young children, but by the time they become school age, they're typically moving out and purchasing a home in the community. So I don't think you'll see pressure on the school system from this type of development. And we are targeting the more affluent baby boomer renter by choice, and you know, the earlier comment about the demand and how, how many more of these apartments do we need? Where are all these people coming from? You know, there are baby boomers retiring by the thousands every day. These are more affluent folks. And remember, there's a competition here too, because unfortunately, we don't have a Florida climate, and so if we don't offer attractive housing alternatives, these folks will leave the community, and we want them to stay, and they want to stay. They've perhaps lived here all their lives and want to stay in the community, but they don't want to deal with stairs or snow or lawn anymore, and they need to have alternative housing choices, and this is one of them.
Thank you. And the only other thing, and I, not necessarily related to the rezone, probably more appropriate with a site plan review, was the public road and no parking on the public road. There's been some issues further south on Orchard Way, and I know that it was brought up, that there will be no parking on one side of that, that public road. So other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Right. Need to continue. Doug, I read in the minutes that there was a resident who complained about the increase in traffic on Orchard Way. It was directed to Alderman Lorik, it was read into the minutes. We had that, we had that discussion about increase in traffic through that subdivision when that other development was, was created. How do I word this? Is what he's, is what the resident said true with regards to the substantial increase in traffic and such that, that now those residents are even, again, concerned about what more traffic this development might bring to their subdivision?
Oh, certainly, I won't try to speak on behalf of that resident. I mean, I think any perceived increase in, in traffic is an impact on a neighborhood and a lifestyle. That neighborhood, that entire Apple Creek neighborhood was designed with connectivity in mind, and the 27th Street Access Management Plan for the state requires connectivity so that we don't have all the vehicle trips, you know, making awkward turns onto, to and from 27th Street, and some of those trips in between the neighborhood can stay within the neighborhood. So from the standpoint of there being a connected network of streets, yes, there is. Now, the likelihood of someone in this development, you know, going, weaving their way through the neighborhood to get out to, through Colonial Woods, through Apple Creek Farms, it's a public street, and the public streets are designed for that. So yes, it is a possibility, and I don't want to discount the impact that, the perceived impact that, that has on people's lives, but the roads are designed for that, and the network is designed for that.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll just add on to that as well. That was discussed at the planning meeting. That is my neighborhood, I live in the neighborhood, I know a lot of people in the neighborhood. With the previous development, there were some stop signs put into place to try to alleviate some of that. With this development, this one's actually two, there's those most recent ones, and there's a condo development, and then this one's even north of that. So that was brought up, and again, the likelihood of them going right out to 27th Street, which is on the picture, their main entrance and exit, is, seems a little bit more likely than them traveling south through two developments to go then through a full residential neighborhood. But obviously, I'll keep an eye on it, and the neighbors that bring that up and write the letters, I'm well aware of, and I talk to them quite often, so they'll for sure let me know if there's a definite increase, and it can be addressed at that time.
Thank you. For Jenny, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dan. Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd District, and I guess this, Doug, is for you and other members of the Planning Commission, 48-month project timeline. Is, is that typical for a project of this size? And the reason I bring that up is, contained in our notes is a potential, another potential project that had a, I believe it was 15-month project completion timeline. So are there reasons behind that big difference? And again, is it, is it four years for an active construction site on 27th Street? Would that be typical?
You know, it's not, and I think that is negotiation with the developer, given the way that they want to market these buildings. I mean, it was really a compromise between, well, we were preferred to have a much shorter absorption period. I mean, the one thing from the city's perspective, that's what we insisted upon, and which was agreed upon, is that all the public improvements, all of the amenities, all the stormwater infrastructure, all of that will be developed as Phase 1. So really, as these different phases are constructed, it's just the buildings, I mean, you always have amenities and infrastructure to support that.
That is a great point, and we did talk about that timeline. The other thing, as they move through the phases, they'll have to complete Phase 1 before they can even attempt Phase 2. The other part of it is, and again, that's, that's up to them, but. attempt phase two. The other part of it is, and again, that's that's up to them, but cash flow wise, they wanted to get some people in place to help the project. And plus, with the pandemic, construction prices of material and everything is really through the roof right now. So it may add on some relief going forward as well. So I think Doug made a great point. We would have liked to have seen it shorter. But again, we're willing to to work to get this quality in. So.
Another question that I had, an issue about the use of vinyl trim on on the buildings. Was that a situation that was?
Yeah, there were.
That was, I mean, there was some discussion.
Resolved. That's been resolved. There were no vinyl siding on.
Oh, okay, great.
There were. There were just a few architectural issues that we had to work through.
Okay. Thank you. Ken?
Thanks, Mayor. Doug, and for your group and Andrew, too. And yeah, I brought to the extensive notes of the planning last couple planning commission meetings. I appreciate the extensive review. And I know this has been a grind. This has gone on for a few years. We appreciate the effort the staff has put through to actually bring this to fulfillment here, with this vote in front of us tonight. Rich actually covered most of what I was gonna wonder about. I did have, I was just clarified, the twelve month start for the phase one after the adoption of the code. Is that a typical timeframe for starting phase one?
That's pretty typical, yes.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to clarify. But once again, thanks yet for the for the effort it really has. Yes, it spent a lot of time.
It's been a number of iterations over.
Planning Commission has two years or so.
Very robust in their review. So I appreciate that.
And actually, it's a very nice looking development. Mike, anything? Chris?
All of my information.
Okay. I have nothing further really to add. I mean, it's all been said. So if you gentlemen would like to make a motion.
Park moves to adopt ordinance three zero one five, an ordinance to approve a rezoning of the properties at eighty one hundred and eighty one forty six South Twenty Seventh Street and eighty one hundred South Orchard Way to RM one multifamily residential planned unit development.
Dukenyak, Second. All call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And I made is also consideration of a rezone for the properties at four forty one West Ryan Road from B four highway business to RM one multifamily residential with a conditional use permit for multifamily residential dwellings in excess of four dwelling units per structure. And Catherine, if you'd read this public record in the record?
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Steve Papp, Rebel Investments, rezone the property at four forty one West Ryan Road from B four highway business to RM one multifamily residential with a conditional use permit for multifamily residential dwellings in excess of four dwelling units per structure. Applicant is Steve Papp, Rebel Investments, property owner, Parkside Land Group LLC. Therefore, as the legal description, date of notice is August eleventh, two thousand twenty one.
And Doug?
Thanks again. This public hearing is a request to rezone the property at four forty one West Ryan Road and to grant a conditional use permit that will allow for early development of multifamily residential in excess of four units per building. This is a little bit different in the sense that the earlier public hearing referenced a planned unit development. This is not necessarily a planned unit development, but it the conditional use permit and the conditions and restrictions that that accompany that act very similar to that. And the level of review certainly would be comparable to that, although it doesn't allow for those types of variations that we talked about in the earlier public hearing. So this, and the property is shown on your screen right here. I want just wanted to bring up a conceptual plan, because this is again, the actual plan review would be subject to the plan commission's review and approval. This would be for a total of four buildings, two two story buildings and two three story buildings. Although, as the developer will no doubt remind us this evening, it really functions as two buildings. And what you see is a set of two buildings that are connected by an underground or low grade parking garage. So it's really two buildings that look like four buildings of two and three stories. But before we talk about the concept plan, I sorry about that. Just want to talk about a little bit about the groundwork for for what this property is zoned and how it's shown on the comprehensive plan. So the land use plan in the adopted comprehensive plan does show this as a future single family attached development. And what does that mean? A single family attached means townhomes. It means duplexes, things of that nature. And it also shows us a flex overlay. So what that means is that there's some additional flexibility afforded to the planning commission and the common council to consider developments of light density that would accomplish those goals for the community. In this case, staff has identified that that medium density multifamily residential category as contained in the housing and neighborhood section of the conference plan really did fit this property. And this property, just a bit of history that may not actually have been in in your packet. And this property has been the subject of numerous development proposals over the year. Several multifamily development proposals that were, quite frankly, quite frankly, a lot more dense than when we were comfortable with. There was also a manufacturing development proposal on there, which would have created a pretty large building and some kind of warehousing functions and distribution functions there. Again, not things that, given the the proximity of this to the residential neighborhood, that staff certainly was ready to endorse. I think that the proposal before you this evening is a lot more sensitive to the adjacent properties, the surrounding residential than some of those earlier. And and maybe, you know, I won't go through the whole thing, but you can kind of see a rendering of what's being proposed there. It really is a mix of one hundred and eighteen units, which is probably honestly, probably up to half of what we've seen in some earlier development proposals. And of those, fifty six would be one bedroom, fifty six would be two bedrooms, and I think there'd be eight three bedroom units. The buildings themselves would be unique in the sense that in there would be some kind of townhome or stack flat properties of three bedroom units that would be wrapped around some of the more traditional multifamily and some architecture, which I know when I was reviewing buildings at this point, that's the plan commission's dominion. But I think that it's really sensitive to the scale of the surrounding neighborhood and to its location adjacent to parkland and adjacent to our police department. And it would share the public street Eagle Summit Drive with our police department. There would be some improvements to the end of the road, just to make a permanent cul-de-sac there. But as we, those issues would all be addressed, provided that the property is rezoned, conditionally experiment is granted, and we'd move through the site plan review process. So access to Ryan Road, there actually wouldn't be any access to Ryan Road, aside from the public street, which is, I believe it's called Eagle Summit Drive. So there would be no driveway, direct driveway to Ryan Road, but come off the public street that is shared with the police station. That being said, though, we would still be concerned about having two points of access, essentially the most access we can provide. And we've been working with the fire department to make sure that any site plan that's presented would allow for the maximum amount of accessibility for for public safety and public services. So as I said, each of the buildings would have access to underground parking in that kind of shared configuration that we talked about. The total number of parking spaces would be well in, well in more than our code requires. I think there'll be a total one hundred and ninety six parking stalls for the one hundred and eighteen proposed units. And again, the concept plan, and that's what it is, it's concept plan, does exceed that minimum requirement, and we would be looking at that as part of the site plan. So with that in mind, this is a public hearing, and I would ask that anyone who's any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning and conditional use permit for this property to please draw up the parents form. Once your name is called, proceed to the podium, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anyone wishing to speak, please approach podium, name and address. And third and final call. We will now close the public hearing and move on to consideration in number nine of the ordinance to rezone the properties at four forty one West Ryan Road from B four highway business to RM one multifamily residential with a conditional use for multifamily residential dwellings in excess of four dwelling units per structure. Open it up to council. Ken, anything? Your district?
Yep. Had a chance to meet with the developers probably a month, month and a half ago initially, take a look at what they had in mind. I found the their proposal very, at least in terms of what we've seen, very conducive to this particular piece of property, conducive to the neighborhood synergies with the PD and Edgerton's warehouse, our headquarters building, I think, are pretty, pretty nice. So they're very attractively designed, lower impact, significant underground parking here, significant investment by the developer. Given what I have seen that could have been on this property, and the fact they have a very motivated seller, it comes to the point where you got to, you got to pick something that you're going to be willing to work with. And I think this this development fits that bill pretty well. We went through a pretty significant comprehensive plan review year and a half ago, a year ago on this particular property with the flex overlay, thinking that we'd have to be a little more flexible with our residential thought process. And I think it's, it probably served us well to be a little more flexible from that standpoint. So I think from this from my standpoint, it suits the neighborhood well. We've had some impact. I have a couple neighbors here, if they want to want to speak to anything. Some, some other folks have chimed in the planning commission process already. So I've spoken or emailed with some privately. So I think the concerns were alleviated or at least addressed. And I think it's a proposal will be welcome in the community.
Anyone else? Chris? Mike? Steve?
Alan McCrickowski, First District. Again, I just want to express my concern for another high end luxury apartment complex in the city. I see that their rent's going to go anywhere from fourteen hundred to twenty five hundred a month. And for what it's worth, I mean, if somebody has a fifteen dollar an hour job, that's thirty one thousand two hundred dollars before taxes. And if they're, you know, not saying they could afford this apartment because a twenty, twenty five hundred dollar a month would be thirty thousand fourteen to six, fourteen hundred dollars a month would be sixteen eight. So again, you'd have to have a roommate. And I guess I just would like to see some sensible, affordable housing in the city versus yet another high end apartment complex. Thank you.
Alan, don't disagree with you. And we will be bending that way soon to get get that type of housing. And just to add a little comment to it, you're right, you know, the people, I hear this a lot in public, and the people that always say, wow, that's a lot of rent. I wouldn't pay it. They're homeowners. They believe that way. There's, there's just a whole generation out there that does the rent. And we're really blessed in Oak Creek that we have over ninety percent rental rates going up. And there's demand for these products. So, so different, different thought process for different people going on out there. But I don't always disagree with it. But but it is, as Ken said, this iteration is is really a nice, nice layout for that property, I think. So, Rich, did you want to speak?
Oh.
Greg?
Thank you.
No. So, you know, just for the residents that are there, we've already talked at planning on the on the far south side of the property. There's a dog park and some tennis courts, about making sure that the lighting isn't going to be impactful to the neighborhood to the south and things of that nature. So we're already working that way. And there's buffer. The county owns some land back there as well. So as I said, Eagle Summit will extend, and Doug made the point, they're working with the fire department for a secondary access somewhere in there. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, sorry, Doug. I forgot my commentary. And I talked with the developer early on about this, too, that the county has on, obviously, you're well aware that the county's got an under proposed bike trail. There's a, you know, they have a trail shown on the western side of this property. So I'm not sure what you guys are doing with that. But just, I guess, we'll have a few more swings at this ball right before, in terms of site plan and things like that. So I assume that'll be addressed further down the road.
It will. And the county certainly has some pretty robust plans for for trail network, you know, Creek and elsewhere, which is great. And, you know, how those integrate and what's the best combination of segments to achieve those goals.
To make sure we're working with them. So I don't want to forestall what they've got in mind. But it is, it is on their map as a proposed path. And obviously, the secondary access, I imagine, will be some, not officially probably paved street or whatever view, but some kind of.
And just to be clear, that secondary access wouldn't be mean through any through the existing subdivisions. I mean, it would be back probably out to Eagle Summit Drive.
There's no further discussion. Motion on nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, I move to approve ordinance three zero one six, rezone the property at four forty one West Ryan Road from B four highway business to RM one multifamily residential with a conditional use permit for multifamily residential dwellings in excess of four dwelling units per structure.
Guzakowski, Second.
All call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And that'll get us to old business. And under health, it's consideration of a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the Oak Creek Health Department, the Cudahay Health Department, and South Milwaukee St. Francis Health Department for the development of a full time joint zone E preparedness coordinator position. So with us tonight is Darcy. How are you, Darcy?
I'm good. Thanks. I'm Darcy DuBois, Health Officer with the City of Oak Creek Health Department. So I am looking, I'm here tonight to request approval of the MOU for this preparedness coordinator position. The agreement would be between the Oak Creek, Cudahay, and South Milwaukee St. Francis Health Departments, and this position would be a shared position between those three health departments. So just a little bit of background, these three health departments, we have worked together as a zone for emergency preparedness since two thousand seventeen at the direction of the CDC and the State of Wisconsin. Currently, each health department has one person identified as their emergency preparedness lead, and then they work together to make sure that our plans are in alignment and that we're meeting the requirements put forth by the state and federal governments. So this position would really allow us to work more efficiently to eliminate redundancy between the three health departments and to more effectively utilize our staff and our funding resources. Since this position will assume many of the responsibilities that those three staff are currently doing, that the need for this position has long been identified, but because of limited funding, it really wasn't an option in the past. However, with the additional grant funding that has come to the health departments as a result of COVID, it's expected to last through at least two thousand twenty four, that has opened up some funding that would allow us to create this position and sustain it through at least two thousand twenty four with that grant funding. So the MOU outlines the structure for this collaboration and how we will share the costs. It's very similar to the work that we've been doing throughout the pandemic when we operated our COVID testing site as well as our COVID vaccine clinic. So we're well used to working together. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Questions for Darcy. Anyone?
Darcy, sorry. Can you, what changed to last time this was on the agenda?
There were just some additional, Melissa can probably speak to it, but the one of the city attorneys, when they reviewed it, they just wanted some additional components of the MOU. It didn't change the structure or the contents of it. It was more just some legal definitions and things that they wanted to be included. So we didn't want to bring an MOU here that would then have, you know, things added to it that you hadn't seen. So.
Greg, anything? No. I think it's greatly needed. I don't think it's ever been demonstrated more how greatly it's been needed than in the last probably fifteen, eighteen months. We had to work very closely with all those departments for a very long time. So I think this can only benefit the residents of all the communities. So my two cents on it. So if no further questions, motion on ten.
McCrickowski, make a motion to approve resolution number one two two five nine dash zero eight one seven two one, approving a memorandum of understanding between the Oak Creek Health Department, the Cudahay Health Department, and the South Milwaukee St. Francis Health Department for the development of a full time joint zone E preparedness coordinator position.
Lorik, Second. All call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And new businesses also health, and it's consideration of a resolution authorizing the participation in the healthcare emergency readiness coalition. Region seven intergovernmental mutual aid assistance agreement. Darcy?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, just requesting approval for the healthcare emergency readiness coalition or HERC, region seven mutual aid assistance agreement between local health departments. So we currently have an existing public health mutual aid agreement. It was first signed in two thousand and three and was later revised in two thousand and thirteen. The MAA just allows for, in the event of a public health disaster or emergency, these us, we small local health departments may not have the capacity to respond in the the way that we'd needed to respond to the emergency. So this allows us to request assistance from the other participating health departments to ensure that all of the needs are addressed. So the agreement provides structure. So the agreement provides structure for requesting and administering assistance as well as how reimbursement for assistance rendered would be handled, very similar to how police and fire, similar agreements function.
Questions for Darcy concerning this agreement?
Seeing none, no. Um, and motion on eleven, please.
Kurkowski, make a motion to adopt resolution number one two two six four dash zero nine zero seven two one, authorizing participation in the healthcare emergency readiness coalition, Region Seven intergovernmental mutual aid assistance agreement. Local second. Local call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And just very quickly, before we move on to administration, I would just like to point out something I learned this weekend. Our fire department recently achieved ninety-eight point five percent fully vaccinated. So congratulations to the Oak Creek Fire Department. Um, I'm sure there's other departments in Oak Creek that are up around that number, but I think that's pretty impressive for them first responders there, so congratulations to them. Moving on, administration. Item twelve, consideration of an ordinance repealing and recreating section two point six eight of the municipal code regarding parks and recreation.
Suppose I can hop into that?
Yeah.
Contribute something to the evening. Great, great having you with by the staff tonight, I appreciate that. Prior to this item, really pretty simple, we're just following through on the, uh, strategy with regards to the joint recreation and education platform in the community. As part of the MOU, our intergovernmental cooperation agreement, I should say, that outlines that structure, the city and school district have agreed that the committee advisory body that, that both would have representation on, that would help guide and advise and help shape the joint recreation platform moving forward, could very well be our Parks and Recreation Commission. So the change, the big, the big change here is we had a superintendent, a board of education superintendent or his or her designee, this makes that appointment formally a member of the school board, and so really that's the only change in regards to the representation. Other items that were cleaned up just really reflect current practice in terms of scope of the, of the commission, the duties were largely left intact, but cleaned up to remove things like references to the Parks and Recreation Director, which we no longer have, so items like that. But the main one being the, really the putting in place the structure that was agreed upon in the intergovernmental cooperation agreement regarding the joint rec platform.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions, comments for Andrew?
Seeing none, motion, please.
Bill, move to approve ordinance three zero one seven, repealing and recreating section two point six eight of municipal code regarding parks and recreation.
Guzakowski, second.
Local call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item thirteen is informational, and it's our summarized treasurer's report for the month ending July thirty first. Barb?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as Mayor said, it's the Treasury Report on Investment and Banking for month ending July thirty first, twenty twenty one. Attached is the normal report that I have with the detail. In summary, our beginning balance was fifty-one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred four dollars. Ending balance, seventy-three million, one hundred four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Interest earned for the month, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars. There was an increase from beginning to end balance of twenty-one million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, seventy-six dollars. Some of the monthly activity kind of explains the increase in balance. We had tax collection of three hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars. Um, we had our, received our general transportation aid, six hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars. Our fire dues, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We received shared revenue of one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars. Our school tax credit, five million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars. We received our first dollar credit, six hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Our exempt computer aid, one hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars. Our video service provider aid, eighty-seven thousand, seventy dollars. We received the Lake Shore Commons bond of sixteen million, five hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and paid an escrow payment of four hundred fifty thousand.
Questions for Barb?
Just a bit of a, of a preview for our upcoming budget discussions. Obviously, interest earnings is going to be a major hole in our revenue picture, and Max, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but just to give you an order of magnitude, interest income is one fortieth of what it was like two years ago. I think that was the number, so just to put that in perspective, I think we're looking at a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar loss in our interest income for the budget, heading into the budget for twenty twenty-two, so file that one away, and we'll talk about it again, but certainly it's something to, something to, to, uh, overcome in this coming budget.
Okay. The news is just everywhere, eh?
Yeah. There you go, Max. That was since Max came on board, the interest income started.
Thank you, Barb. That will get us to item fourteen, community development, consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for All-Star Buick GMC for the properties at seventy twenty and seventy-seven South Twenty-seventh Street. Doug?
Thank you. This is actually a certified survey map, it's actually a minor land division combining two parcels at the corner of twenty seventh and Austin. If you recall, some, some history about the city of Oak Creek, one of our establishments, our old entertainment establishments had occupied that corner for quite some time, and was essentially, uh, removed or relocated elsewhere as a result of the state's investment in twenty-seventh street in the intersection with Austin Avenue. After the, the right of way was used for Austin Avenue, there was a remnant parcel that was made available, which didn't have any access from either twenty-seventh street or Austin Avenue, but in the last was a parcel that was made available. The parcel really is of very little value unless it is to the adjacent parcel, which is All-Star Buick GMC. They have expressed an interest in it, and they have come to an agreement to purchase that, and will be combining that with their parcel for some additional vehicle display, and there's some information on that in your packet as well as, as been going, as being discussed by the planning commission as well. But again, no new lots being created, it's just consolidation of the two parcels on twenty-seventh and Austin.
Thank you, Doug. Questions? Steve? There's just a comment, we, we normally don't give the state of Wisconsin their, their due when they, or their good comments, or good, whatever, when they do something for a community, but taking over that property at that corner was a good thing, you know? And I guess it was just a matter of time before All-Star Buick acquired it, because like you said, there was nothing that could go there.
They're there, the logical user of that property, yeah.
That's it. Okay. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Burke moves to adopt resolution number one two two six three dash zero nine zero seven two one, a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Timothy Grayman, All-Star Buick GMC for the properties at seventy twenty and seventy seventy, South Twenty-seventh Street.
Dukenyak, second.
Local call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And item fifteen is consideration of a motion to award the architectural and engineering design for Aben Shyne Park Beer Garden to Plunkett Reisheck Architects for their stated service fees of a hundred and eight thousand plus reimbursables. Doug?
Sure. You're all familiar with Aben Shyne Park, the city's first community, community park, so he's invested substantially in that, and in fact, a week or two ago, I guess, cut the ribbon on the skate park addition, which was very successful. Lots of things going on there with the baseball field, with, with the frisbee golf course. So what, really in an effort to, uh, make the best use of that property, the city's major community park, and Lake Vista certainly is the second and equally as important, but this being in the center of the community, a master plan was done for the property, could kind of guide the future development and capital investment into the park. And that, that plan included seventeen projects, and it actually has some discussion with respect to a permanent beer garden or pavilion facilities that would support a permanent beer garden. And there have been current discussions with an operator which have suggested that these facilities be slightly relocated to a different area of the park, and one of, one of the things that the next iteration of that process would be to have some more detailed planning and engineering work done on that to determine the feasibility and location, and to get that, that project ready for eventual construction, which we hope will, will happen very quickly, and be in place to support the permanent beer garden, if not next year, certainly in twenty twenty-three. So staff did reach out to several local architectural and engineering design firms to seek proposals for a project. We responded, we received responses from two firms, Rinco, who you should be very familiar with, as well as Plunkett Research, who is also very familiar, having done many projects in the city of Oak Creek. And the two proposals were sent to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their review. Lots of really good discussion by the commission about the future of the park and the process for, you know, coming up with the best, uh, the best solution for creating those facilities and kind of weaving that into the, the adopted master plan. And after considerable discussion, again, the, the commission, albeit not unanimously, did vote to recommend to the council that Plunkett Research be engaged to provide these architectural and engineering services. Their proposal is for a fee of, of a hundred and eight thousand dollars plus reimbursables, and that is the recommendation being brought forward to the council.
Okay. Questions regarding Aben Shyne? Sorry, the question, answer, question person tonight. Doug, as, I remember the, talking about this in the master plan, is this going to be a beer garden that will operate weekly, or was there talk way back when we did the master plan that the building would be available for, like you said, there's, there's room for two food trucks, so it could be a food truck event, or even rental for private parties? I mean, could you refresh my?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the, the, the master plan really envisioned a, a year-round facility, something that's for use more than just, for instance, a beer garden, you know, certainly having a pavilion which is usable for other functions would be, uh, in the interest of the city, you know, not to invest, would be considerable revenues to park impact fees in the facility that's a single-use facility would be, you know, I would hope would be, uh, thought through, and we could have a facility that will serve multiple purposes, but certainly would support the needs of a, a beer garden.
That's what I, that's what I, okay, thank you. Greg?
Um, I'm just a little curious, the, the staff report mentions that there was considerable deliberation between the two, and just looking at the numbers, it seems like one was considerably higher. Do you know what the reasoning why that one was, I guess, so strongly considered?
Sure.
I noticed a hundred and eight is, they're adding, um, the reimbursables.
Right.
Can that amount add up to the proposal of the other?
You know, I think it certainly could bring it within a reasonable range of that, and that was certainly wasn't a topic of discussion by the commission, but some of the things that were brought up by this, this commission as well were kind of the experience of the firms in designing buildings that, that really, uh, were designed for those multiple purposes, and, and did offer, uh, some, some value in terms of the, not only the initial capital investment, but the maintenance over the long haul, and while certainly, I think I speak for the commission in saying that, that Rinco has done some outstanding work, uh, with Drexel Town Square, with Lake Vista, with, uh, Lake Shore Commons, I think that the commission may have been a little bit more comfortable with the resume that Plunkett Research brings with the development of several civic buildings and, and public spaces which have kind of proven, uh, their value over a certain period of time.
Thank you. Rich, anything? Good, thank you. Mike? Ken?
We're gonna pay us on a park impact fees?
Yes.
Did we have a ballpark number?
Oh, I don't, I'm sorry. Or special construction or?
No, just the planning process.
How many, how much, how much park impact fees are?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We usually have like a CIP number, what we had a budgeted amount for, for design, but.
Have CIP for this?
I have a budgeted design. We'll have a discussion.
Seeing none, uh, motion. Kurkowski, make a motion to award the architectural and engineering design for the Aben Shyne Park Beer Garden to Plunkett Reisheck Architects for their stated service fees of one hundred eight thousand dollars plus reimbursables. Local second. Local call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And that'll get us to item sixteen, which is the license committee, which I will now turn over to Alderman Kurkowski. Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody has a, had an opportunity to review the common council report for license committee. Does anybody have any cares, questions, or concerns? All right, seeing none, Kurkowski, make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one license committee report.
Dukenyak, second.
Local call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item seventeen is our vendor summary report for August thirty first, twenty twenty-one. Please take a look, and any questions, feel free to speak up.
Alderman Dukenyak, third district, I don't know who to direct the question to. Item number eleven, almost twenty-five thousand dollars for City Hall landscaping. Can someone provide a bit more detail on that? Is that a yearly fee? Was that something for past work? Does that include Drexel Town Square if it's twenty-five grand a year?
Have you, have you noticed City Hall and the plantings as of late?
Yes.
Looks good.
So, that didn't answer my question. Is that a yearly fee?
Right now, we needed to spuce it up, so, uh, city administrator and myself took a service contract to, to get those, those areas looking where they needed to, to be, because DPW couldn't catch up, we didn't get the kids early, not the kids, summer help, uh, early enough, and they just couldn't keep up, and we can't allow our investment in City Hall to go that long.
I completely understand that, but if, if it's a yearly fee or a one-time fee or...
Well, going forward, as we look at DPW and the actions of how summer falls, we'll have to make that decision going forward in a budget process. Andrew?
Yeah, I echo that. I, I don't think that this has to be an annual, uh, annual expense to this degree. I think we do need to take a look at some sort of contracted work out here to kind of mine the gap between, you know, March and, and May when we do get the summer help available. That was really the struggle. Uh, we fell, fell way behind, and it would have been hundreds and hundreds of man-hours to get caught back up to where we needed to, so we took the swifter course, and unfortunately, it's a painful number to, to pay, but I think it does look good, and we, we do need to have a more strategic plan of attack for keeping the, the capital sparkling here moving forward.
No doubt. It, it does look good, but I had to ask the question because that was a rather alarming number, yeah.
And, and they, they didn't buy annual flowers, they, they got perennials and permanent stuff that can stick around, but, uh, yeah, we fell so far behind, not just this year, but last year. It was almost a two-year culmination, but going forward, we'll have that discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, no further questions? Motion. Kurkowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, vendor summary, vendor summary first.
Uh, retract that motion.
Steve didn't like the landscaping.
I thought we'd just skip into that. I got an hour ten in the pool, so you know, that's why I wanted to.
Gale, move to approve the August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one vendor summary report in the total amount of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars, three cents.
Guzakowski, second.
Local call.